Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order for our 2:00 workshop. Let us call the roll, please, to establish a quorum.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Vice Mayor Hanson, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Chenier, Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
And I expect Councilmember Ashbery momentarily.
Councilmember Ashbery will be here in just a moment, okay? Very, very good. Today, this afternoon, we are going to hold a very important workshop entitled "Inclusive Economic and Community Development Workshop." I'm going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager Michael Jasso and his team in just a minute, and our expert panel here, Tracy Stigler, welcome to you, sir, Barry Broom, of course, GSIAC and Kathy Rodriguez from the Hispanic Chamber, and members of the public as well. I thought maybe I would make a very brief opening set of comments that sort of frame what we hope to do today and tonight, and then we will proceed with the discussion. So I would say it this way. Members, today we will begin, I hope, implementing an important commitment to the people of Sacramento, that we invest current and future taxpayer dollars in an intentional and impactful way to grow a high-wage, modern, inclusive economy here in Sacramento. Even prior to the voters considering Measure U on November 6th, the community stakeholders you will hear from today, others who have been participating over the last weeks and months, the city manager and I are asking the council to consider approving three important policy directions, both this evening and next week. Number one, a robust accountability commission with more community members and more input than the original Measure U committee. Number two, the beginning of a series of evaluation metrics that will hold us accountable as a city to improving the economic condition of the city with a specific focus on our neighborhoods and our disadvantaged communities. And three, next week, a resolution committing us to specific steps to continually improve the efficiency of city operations. Today is not the end point by any means. It is the beginning, the beginning of our commitment to ensure that if we gain the resources to directly invest in building a modern, inclusive economy, that in fact, we follow through. Look forward to the workshop today and the discussion, not only from the panelists, but of course, from the members, as we consider voting on several of these measures that I described at 5:00 or soon thereafter this evening. Mr. Jasso, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, city manager. For the record, my name is Michael Jasso, Assistant City Manager, and I'm joined with two colleagues today, to my left, Leslie Fritchy and Melissa Angiano. So, late last year, the city launched Project Prosper to learn best practices regarding how modern metropolitan economies function, to diagnose structural strengths and weaknesses of Sacramento's current economy and its prognosis for the future, and to identify ways to improve the city's economy and quality of life. Through Project Prosper, the city engaged national experts, created a broad-based working group of local and regional stakeholders, and held five well-attended community meetings. I would like to specifically thank and identify Ms. Doreen Hackler, who's here today, who helped champion that effort as we move forward. It's been very instrumental in the work that we are and will be continuing doing. Additionally, the Brookings Institution's completed a report earlier this year identifying a number of troubling trends and suggested several bright spots of opportunities that could strengthen the city's economy. This report is included in the staff report. Combined, these efforts presented a call to action that all residents must participate in, and most importantly, benefit from economic activity if the city is to grow and thrive in the years to come. So I'd like to briefly go over some of the key findings from this work, and then elaborate on how we are hoping to move forward. Most significantly, while the Sacramento region is relatively prosperous compared to other large metropolitan areas, it also has been had a number of troubling economic trajectories. Since 2006, the region is ranked in the bottom third of the 100 largest MSAs when measuring growth, prosperity, and inclusion. This is troubling. More than one-third of our residents in the region struggle to make ends meet, and these struggling adults are disproportionately people of color and individuals with lower levels of education. Employment in the Sacramento region's tradable industries is growing slower than the nation as a whole. This is important because the presence of tradable sectors is highly correlated to greater wealth creation and long-term economic sustainability. Employers likewise are demanding and rewarding workers with higher educational and digital skills, yet Black and Latino workers are underrepresented in medium and high digital occupations. The Sacramento region's workforce supply is becoming much more racially diverse, which makes closing educational employment disparities by race all more urgent as we move forward. The most important factor that will determine the long-run economic prosperity of Sacramento as a region is its ability to grow, retain, and attract a strong workforce that is in fact locally grown. Addressing these issues will not only require the city's commitment to a comprehensive economic and community development strategy, but more importantly, one that is inclusive, accountable, and measurable. The development of a true prosperity plan for all Sacramento's is our endeavor. Today's workshop will outline a multi-pronged approach to ensure implementation of such a strategy which includes systems for accountability, and that any future city investments made under the strategy are reflective of community and business needs. I want to stress that while we present and discuss this base framework from which to move forward, this is very much a work in progress, which will afford ample opportunity for stakeholder input as we move forward. The multi-pronged approach includes a set of key inclusive guiding principles. It also includes the establishment of an investment committee. It includes quality of life indicators through which to value our investments, and a criteria and performance metric systems through which we evaluate the outcomes of those investments. Combined, these mechanisms provide the city with the infrastructure for vetting, evaluating, and prioritizing all city future investments and projects and programs. I want to start first with our inclusive guiding principles. Building on the work of Project Prosper and the Brookings Report, four key principles have emerged. First is we need community engagement. We need to build community ownership and voice and capacity as we move forward. Tapping into our community-rooted organization, neighborhood groups, and individuals to advance equitable and inclusive development policies and practices over the long run will yield long-term sustainable benefits and ensure that we're inclusive to all our citizens. We have to focus on neighborhoods, and we have to make sure that we endeavor to make all our neighborhoods healthy communities and full of opportunities. We have to focus on jobs and expand employment opportunities, concentrating on workforce development programs that increase talent pipelines and expand opportunities at all levels. And we have to focus on businesses, advance equity, diversity, and inclusion throughout our business community, and expand ownership opportunities at all stages. Once a strategy is adopted by the city council, the overall components of implementation will fall into two broad categories. First is what actions and investments the city decides to make, and secondly, how will it go about in making those decisions? Following my remarks, I will turn over the discussion to a panel to weigh in on these components. So the first is what investments the cities makes and how do we come to those decisions? These critical choices would be informed and measured by a robust and multi-tiered system of criteria, performance metrics, and indicators which could be evaluated and applied at least at three different scales. One is citywide, looking at measures such as, does the project or the opportunity contribute to tax base, does it build an identified industry cluster, et cetera. We also want to focus on geographies, key sub-areas in the cities that we know need investment and our attention, focusing on neighborhoods, our property and business improvement districts, and council districts. And we have to focus on discrete programs and projects that yield good jobs or pathways to jobs that matter to all of us. The second part of this equation is how our decisions will be made. We are proposing an investment committee whose members would come primarily from the private and community sectors, and they would evaluate proposals using the above-mentioned evaluation systems and provide sound advice and recommendations to the city for city council consideration. This would be further augmented by a group of independent individuals of at least three to five national experts to ensure that the city has continuous access to current best practices, new approaches, and independent advice that is in fact scaled and measured in a national context. To build community ownership, voice, and capacity, it's anticipated that this investment group could work closely with any future community advisory panel or other advisory panels when allocating and recommending the use of city resources. Overall, we see this approach as a good management practice. It's an approach that not only establishes transparency and accountability, but demonstrates in a way that builds community trust and ownership. Furthermore, this approach is common, as you look across the country and municipalities, is very much a practice that is followed in pursuing economic development across the country. Again, today, we would like to provide an opportunity for council to hear from a few community stakeholders that the city engaged to assist in developing this framework. After this afternoon's discussion, council will have an opportunity to adopt a resolution this evening that endorses the framework we've outlined and provides direction to staff to utilize the framework approach to develop a comprehensive and inclusive economic development strategy, a true community-informed prosperity plan. If approved, our next steps will be to engage a range of community, neighborhood, education, housing, business interests to develop a strategy that is actionable and based on priorities, resources, and metrics. As we look at these metrics, in front of you are a number of metrics and indicators that we put as an illustrative detailing of what are the kinds of things we would look at. It's not all-inclusive nor intended to be all-inclusive, and there'll be opportunity for further input and refinement. The group, as we move forward, would refine community indicators and performance metrics based on neighborhood and community feedback and needs as identified through the strategy process. So with that background, I'll now turn over the workshop to the panel who can provide greater detail about the challenges confronting our city and how this suggested approach can play a vital role in addressing these challenges. I'd like to introduce our panel. To our left, we have Kathy Rodriguez, President and CEO of the Sacramento Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Barry Broom, President and CEO of Greater Sacramento Economic Council, and Tracy Stigler of the Sierra Health Foundation. With that, I invite the panel to join the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Before I turn it over to the panelists, I just want to say a thank you not only to you and your team, Michael, terrific job, to everybody, but I also want to thank Richard Dana, who's in the audience, and Mike McKeever, who both have worked tirelessly on this. And I want to give a special shout-out to Doreen Hackler, whose work, analytical work through Project Prosper, really is what brings us to today's discussion, the foundation. And so, we thank you. It is not sitting on a dusty shelf, as they say. It's an active piece of work that will evolve, but you really helped get us started, so thank you. Very good. Let us turn it over to the panelists. Who would like to begin? Shall we flip a coin?
We can flip a coin.
Mr. Stigler, go ahead. And are you also representing the Build Black Coalition as well? Okay. I think that's important to note, that both you and Chet Hewitt have been actively at the table here. Go ahead.
Thank you for joining the conversation. A very critical conversation for our community. I'm glad you were with this project because in so many times in the past, certain communities have been left out in times of growth prosperity. And so, as we started talking about economic development, I wanted to ensure that the policies reflected the diversity and inclusivity of our community. And so, it's been a pleasure actually working with your staff, because some of the conversation initially started out where there wasn't sort of a deep dive into inclusivity. There was just a deep discussion on economic growth as opposed to economic development, meaning we were focusing more on the quantitative versus the qualitative nature of development. And so, I think that the criteria that's been laid out before you is an initial attempt to ensure that as we move forward with investment in our region, that some of these communities also benefit from it. And I'm just going to leave it with that piece and move on to Barry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Yeah, well, first off, Howard, I want to congratulate you because, you know, Michael Jasso is doing exactly what he hoped he would do when he came here. He's brought a lot of expertise and diligence to the community and the entire economic development team. I think, last, I've been here a little over three years, the transformation of the city's thinking and role and leadership on the economy has been transformative, and I want to congratulate you for that, and the mayor, and all of council. I think it takes a long time for the city to get credit for things, you know? So, we have lagging credit coming our way, but I think what people are going to really see is, I think this is going to be a national, if not a global, best practice. It definitely will be a national best practice. I think that other communities around the country will learn from us and draw inspiration from us, and I really, truly believe that this is going to impact our city, our community, our region in a way, and really move the needle. And I'm super excited about it. Three, just personally, it was really good for me running a large-market economic model where I don't get a chance to sit in with neighborhood leaders, to go through a very methodical process, where I could sit down and hear about dumping and things that aren't necessarily on my plate, and really get a chance to understand, you know, just how tough it is on some of our neighborhoods, you know, to get treated with basic respect. I mean, I'm always thinking in terms of jobs and investment and how you elevate people economically and personal income, but it was a really powerful experience for me to really connect two neighborhood leaders, and it was really, I think it's going to help Greater Sacramento Economic Council be a better instrument of progress and change for the region. And then, I think finally, I think, you know, the ability to set a best-practice standard, implement it, execute it, and achieve it, which I believe we will do, and I'm completely confident we'll do it, will start to change the confidence in the community. You know, one of the things that I think is really important is our community gain confidence in itself, that we can do big things, and that we can change our trajectory. And when we talk about tackling big issues, you know, that it's more than just a political conversation, that will actually bring merit and courage and grit to the table and do that. And I think all of these achievements are going to occur, you know, through this process and through going forward, and it's been a real privilege to work with the city and all the partners on the rollout of this, you know, very critical initiative, that I am confident our community will have a before and after with this. I really believe that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathy?
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me here. So, I came a little late to the game here, but, so, I'm going to talk from that perspective. So, when I went to this last meeting and got to see what these metrics and the transparency that's involved, it's, actually, it's made me more hopeful. I think that we've had a lot of conversations within our community, within our membership, and out in the neighborhoods about what they feel is happening there and what hasn't happened, because there's a lot of neighborhoods that have been waiting for a long time to get their services up to the same level that are happening in other areas, to have our businesses experience the same type of growth and opportunity that other businesses have had in areas that we put more of a focus on. So, when I see this, what I really appreciate about it, and I think what a lot of other people appreciate about it too, is that there is a metrics and there's an accountability there, because I think those are two words that we really want to see when we look at our city government and when we're talking about inclusive economy, is, you know, is it transparent? Is there a way to hold people accountable? Can people understand how decisions were made? Because a lot of times, people find out again after the fact, here's the decision, here's how we're going. This is going to allow some opportunity to really change the conversation and have people more involved, and that's what I think is really great and useful about it. So I hope, as you look at it, that you feel that that's giving the same to you, and that you, I'm going to take Barry's word over here, feel courageous enough to maybe even expand it a little bit more and let people realize, you know, we want to be transparent. This is, you know, our neighborhoods are all part of Sacramento. A lot of people have heard me say before that we really need to invest and give them the same type of respect and opportunity that is happening in some of our core areas that we've really spent some time in, because that's what we tout as a marketing tool about Sacramento, for the most diverse city in the United States. This is what's really powerful about us. We need to invest in those areas. And again, that's what I think is really great about having these metrics, the transparency and the accountability. So I hope all of you will see the same thing that I've seen.
Thank you very much. All three of you, I know we're going to come back to the conversation. Let me ask you, Michael, in terms of how we proceed here, so, tonight, items 14 and 15 are going to detail this framework, including the beginning of a metric system for evaluating projects and the success of future economic development initiatives. Then, of course, tonight, we've got the account advisory committee as well, which I may ask Councilmember Chenier to talk about in just a moment, but for purposes of the workshop today, do you want to give a preview of item 14 here, or was your intent to save that? I know to save that till tonight, but it also provides a bit of a context for the workshop discussion here, too. I know we're not voting on it today, but...
Sure. Well, we're principally seeking this evening is an endorsement by the council of this framework, which is a work in progress, so there is opportunity for it to evolve and further delineate how we look at projects, how we think about projects, and the criteria, the quality of life indicators and metrics that we would start out of the gate. As I said, it's not all-inclusive, we know we're going to define those, and really task the economic development to further develop that, advance that, and then bring that back to this council for when that refinement is done. We very much, one of the things we are very clear about is that we haven't included all tents, but we know we are going to be doing that. The purpose here is to expand the circle as we go out and build a firm foundation as we do that. So in fact, there is a system as we look at economic development that this city can stand by, that stands criteria in terms of how we look at things and what we expect to get out of these investments, and ensure that they in fact are inclusive and equitable to all our communities. So that's what we would be seeking at this point in time.
Okay. Are the three panelists planning to come back at 5:00 this afternoon?
Like us, too.
Yeah. I think that would be good, because I would like your specific comments on the actual framework itself and on the accountability commission, so we can get into, you know, the appropriate depth around the specific proposal. I just didn't want to lose the opportunity, if it were appropriate this afternoon, in the relaxed, comfortable workshop setting. We'll take off our ties and talk about any of this, right, in a more informal way, but that's up to everybody else. Okay. Do we have public testimony?
I do, I have two.
Okay.
I have two speakers on this item. The first is Chris Logston, and then Robert Copeland.
I think Ms. Carpelo is signing up here, too. Of course. Hi.
Hi. First, thank you to the council for the opportunity to speak. I want to give a quick shout-out to Mr. Jasso. I think we met once about a month ago, was on a related-type issue, but I want to thank you for your work in this space. Also, I want to give a shout-out to Ms. Hackler. We've connected a couple times, too, so I want to give you a shout-out. I want to give Mr. Chenier's team a shout-out as well. They've been really open to conversations, and I assume that those conversations will continue. Also, I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Carr and your staff. I met with one of your staff members also not too long ago, so I want to make this...
Go right into it. We want to make sure we hear you.
I'm going to make this short and sweet. I have a suggestion for the criteria that I think we should return to, and I want to reconnect with your staff, Mr. Jasso, and possibly Ms. Hackler as well. I've been in, I've been doing some work, some research on wealth and wealth inequality, and one of the leading wealth economists in the country, Dr. William Sandy Darity, along with Dr. Derek Hamilton, have concluded that wealth inequality, and household wealth in particular, is a major, major indicator of economic well-being for your average, everyday citizen. And so, to include metrics that can determine, give us some baseline, and then give us some way forward on household wealth here in the city, I think would be helpful to include in the framework. I think there's some good examples of that. I think the Federal Reserve does some really good work in terms of their survey of consumer finances. I know that Dr. Darity's team has done a lot of work on this as well, so I want to add that and include that in the conversation as we go forward, and I look forward to coming back.
Well, that raises a very, very important question, and I want to make sure that we discuss this even in the workshop before we get to tonight, where we have the opportunity this afternoon, by the way, to refine anything that we might want to refine, but this whole issue of household wealth is absolutely correct. Is that part of what we are going to measure, and are we going to seek the right kind of indicators to demonstrate cause and effect between what investments we may be making and the impact on household wealth? Barry?
Yeah, I think personal income growth has got to be part of the plan.
The things we want to make sure we're doing is we're not giving money away, but that we're also measuring returns the right way. Like, one of the conversations we had is, you know, if we invest these dollars as a community, we get a 7% return back on the resources, because one of the things, I know I talked with Councilman Hanson about, is we saw this Philadelphia model, you know, they got $3 billion now, because they've been recovering the dollars for decades. And now, you know, they've got this huge economic powerhouse source of resources to continue to do things. So we want to make sure we're getting, you know, capital back the best we can, so we can continue to recycle economic opportunities down the road, but at the same time, the real return's going to be, you know, raising the quality of life for people in the city and raising their health. And so, I think things like personal income, educational attainment, training and skill sets, as well as tax base, you know, we want to make sure we're building a tax base. You know, we have a lot of long-term cost challenges as a city and a region. We have incredible dependency on government that we need to be pivoting away from. So, you know, how do we build this tax base? How do we build tradable sectors, you know, which is what we've been doing with Prosper and the Brookings Institute? How do we bring up real incomes? And how do we connect at-risk youth and young adults into the economic future? And I think we can find the balance between all those conversations and, you know, do a great job for the community.
Good. Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Next speaker is Robert Copeland, and then Kate Carpelo.
Well, I think Sacramento needs a balanced approach with housing, jobs, education, safety. You've got to rise all boats. Everybody's got to be risen. And now, why did Mayor Steinberg and the rest of the city council do this the first six months of Mayor Steinberg's being mayor? Why now? Why not then? If you would have done it then, we would have been further along. Do it once, a small problem, instead of a huge problem like we have now. I'd like to see more trade, schools open up, or people getting trade, like in construction and any other job, and the trade skills, along with going to college, because we're, the colleges in Sacramento are training people, but we're not keeping them in Sacramento. Jobs are going to the Bay Area, but they're, people are living here. I'd like to see people live here, actually work here. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
And our last speaker is Kate Carpelo.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. First off, thank you for focusing on this and trying to do this very deep work, and for all of the staff and partners. It's an important undertaking. I'm here representing the Sacramento Women and Girls Advancement Coalition, and we would like to see a heightened attention to the issues of gender. I've shared with you my letter, which we will put on our Facebook page this weekend. But I think that in the course of an hour reading through the report, I, as a non-economist, but certainly someone who's done a lot of reading on poverty, identified a number of ways that you could integrate indicators, et cetera, on gender, not as a sideshow, but as a major theme. And secondly, I think that there needs to be a hearing or a meeting of all your partners that focuses specifically on gender. that focuses specifically on gender, specifically on gender for all communities in the community. Secondly, I'd like to see clear staff direction, that this not be missed in the future. I understand that this is an ongoing process, and I had a very rich conversation this morning with Richard Dana, and I do trust that it will be raised in the future. But I'd also like to see clear staff direction and a message to your partners. And finally, I'd like to share with you that the Women's Advancement Coalition has, as an abiding principle, that when we say women, we mean women in all communities. And that means that when you look at women, you look at women of color. And when you look at communities of color, you look at women. And that's because you can't really understand the issues that come forth unless you do those kind of breakdowns. So it's not just jobs. It's jobs with childcare. It's jobs with flex time. It's jobs with transportation right near you and your childcare center, those kind of issues. So please, as you move forward, put a marker on issues of gender so that the workforce is seen in all of its complexity. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. And I just want to thank you and the coalition, Kate, for continuing your hard work and continuing to push and remind us at every turn. I appreciate it. You know, if you look at tonight, right, the quality-of-life criteria, and I give you credit in part for, because of your push, we have seven quality-of-life criteria that we're asking the council to essentially approve tonight. And one of the seven is access to and use of affordable childcare, which I know is not an exclusive issue that affects women, but certainly is a very, very significant and serious issue. But, you know, with Councilmember Ashby's continued advocacy and rightful push as well, we will get this right as we move along here and figure out how we invest current and future dollars in the right way. So thank you. And thank you to Angelique as well. Okay? Very good. We've got, so I'm going to, Vice Mayor, you want to speak?
I was going to say something.
Go, go, go. Well, why don't you go ahead, and then I'm going to bring this discussion back, because 40 minutes for this important topic is way too short for me. So I know we want to get out of here with a reasonable time, but I've got something I want to raise. Go ahead. Go ahead, Steve.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on Barry's comments for a second, because I've been thinking about the transition the city's gone through in the midst of recession, post-recession, the resources we used to have through tax increment financing, our efforts to create economic opportunity without tax increment financing. And you've said it repeatedly, we just don't have a lot of tools in our toolbox. And so when we go, we have to stretch. We have to pull a lot of things together. But it's made me sort of come back, and the paradigm here with the four-point framework, I think, is very good. I don't think necessarily in this set of strata. I think more of a collective impact model.
Explain?
Collective impact model of, you know, aligning resources to outcomes and having a disciplined approach to measure whether or not those investments are producing outcomes. And then if they're not, that you reposition those assets to better achieve your goals. And it's one of those things that reminds me that we have a very unique role in the region as the sort of founding city in the region. And how we know our role and work with our partners to achieve that is one thing. What is our responsibility is a key question that I still am grappling with, because there's no doubt we have a responsibility to our citizens, as well as the overlapping jurisdictions have to those same constituents. But is it simply a fiduciary responsibility, which some people may argue? Is it a representative responsibility? I know it's both, but how do we get there? And I guess the reason I've been thinking about this is what Barry said. The very first study mission I ever went on was to Philadelphia. And it just so happens our new fire chief is from Philly. But they had this Economic Development Corp., which they started in the 1950s, that helps create unique opportunity for marginal projects that otherwise wouldn't have it. But it took them time to build that. So in 1953, I think, is when they created that Philadelphia Economic Development Corp. And as of 2013, it was about a $4 billion, maybe it's larger now. I don't know. But is our strategy a 50-year strategy? Is it a 10-year strategy? What are the benchmarks? And I don't have answers to those questions. But I do know that we've laid out some goals. And I guess as the council goes into this, there's a lot more that we haven't figured out than we have. And how to do it well, and meeting those twin responsibilities of fiduciary and representative, I think, is going to be a big challenge. But Barry's comment kind of provokes some deep thinking.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Good comments. I mean, that's why we're... So I know that we've divided this afternoon and tonight pretty clearly, but I think there's something missing from the workshop here. I think we ought to go back, if you don't mind, Jasso. It wouldn't hurt, Melissa, Leslie, however you want to do this, and actually preview tonight, because I think the council ought to at least begin thinking about and discussing, and the community, again, if they want to, what the... There are three pieces of this I said tonight. There's an Accountability Commission. There is the quality-of-life criteria. And then there are the criterion measurements for citywide inclusive economic and community development strategy. And I think we ought to take another few minutes. And I'm going to start with Jay, who chairs Law &amp; Ledge, just to describe what is coming tonight from Law &amp; Ledge. You know, call this a tease for tonight's meeting. And then ask Michael and/or Leslie or Melissa to describe what are attachments 1A and 1B tonight, or Richard Dana, if you want, or Mike, whatever you want to do, so that if the council wants to ask questions about this overall framework now in the workshop setting, it might save some time tonight, but also there might be some tweaking that we decide to do. That's the purpose of the workshop. So I don't want to ignore what's coming to us tonight. Fair enough?
Sure, happy.
Go ahead. I was going to say, Jay first, because tonight, first, we're going to be asked to look at and potentially approve the Accountability Commission. So maybe just a brief report, Jay, I might ask you to do this again tonight, about what Law &amp; Ledge considered and did a week or so ago.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So currently, Measure U has an oversight committee, which is a relatively small committee that looks after the fact of how dollars were spent to ensure that they were spent in alignment with the original ballot measure. That accountability is always important, but doesn't really give us a full picture of community engagement that would be necessary to ensure that funds are being used to their highest need in our communities. We had a number of community-based organizations and folks from the community who came to us about three months ago, looking at Laney, about three months ago, saying, "We'd like to have you establish a community advisory committee." That would be before the fact. That would help you think through how dollars should be spent, again, where they could have their greatest impact in particularly neighborhoods of greatest need. So what we did was continue to work with a lot of the folks who had come to us, and there were at least three kind of groups of people that did this, and we really appreciate the engagement from the community on this. I'll note that a lot of them were kind of overlapped from the Equity Program on Cannabis, who are really pushing us to think through a lot of these issues at a community level. What we did at Law &amp; Ledge was, with some adjustments to the original idea, put forward a community advisory committee of 15 individuals. All would have to be residents of Sacramento. Each council member and the mayor would appoint one individual. There would be six additional. That would be appointed by our Personnel Committee. What we also wanted to do within that was to have specific expertise by the individuals, so that we ensure that the conversations are robust, because we know that Measure U will have significant funding, and we want, again, make sure that we have the right folks in the right places to have that discussion. What we have is one member being a representative of a taxpayer organization, one member having professional, personal experience with housing, affordable housing, homelessness, and rental housing issues, one member being between the ages of 16 and 24. One member shall have professional experience with business, economic development, or workforce development. One member shall have professional experience with community trauma, mental health, or community-based crime reduction. One member shall have professional experience with youth-focused adult education, public health, or environmental justice organizations. So this is item 15 tonight. This would be the framework for the commission, and then hopefully with the passage of Measure U, these folks will be identified and appointed and get to work immediately.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Chenier, Jay, for the preview. I'm told by our city attorney properly that we can't, you know, dive in in great detail in this, because it's agendized for tonight. But, you know, I just want to encourage members of the council to speak up in this workshop setting about your view of this overall direction here, right? Because the point of today and tonight is to do two things. One, to make it clear to the public that we are serious about outcome-based accountability around economic development. And secondly, that we begin to set a course ourselves, not a permanent, irretrievable, can't-turn-a-little-bit-this-way-or-that-way course, but a real course of action for how we intend to be intentional and purposeful around inclusive economic development. And tonight, we're going to get into some detail about these metrics and the Accountability Commission. But, you know, it's right in front of us, and it's agendized tonight. I just want to encourage members just kind of weigh in a little bit, and, you know, and express your views of the overall direction here. Whether you agree or disagree with Measure U, this is not a political conversation. That'll be for the voters to be had. But whether or not, with additional Measure U resources, or even without them, measuring our investments based on the philosophy and the direction that's been laid out here is the correct way to go. That's what we want from this workshop. All right? So I'm going to turn it next to Councilmember Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. And thanks for the workshop, intended to be, I think, sort of an open discussion leading into tonight. I would just say, I think maybe part of the reason why it feels broad is because it's where we're starting, right? Really, I think this is a broad starter conversation. To me, it's hard to refute any of the details of this. This is something we all want to do. And I don't know that there are people in Sacramento that don't want to do this. This is very Sacramento here, right? Try to get everybody to involve in what's happening with our economic development. We have a tendency sometimes to focus on one area, and then that area does well, but then other areas feel they were left out. And so I think this is an effort to try not to, rather than playing whack-a-mole, to try to cast a really broad net across the entire city, especially when we have an opportunity like what Measure U might present to us. And if for some reason the voters decide not to do Measure U, I have no doubt that this council will seek another way to do the same thing. I'm not sure what that way would be without Measure U, but this is our goal, and this is what we want to achieve. So I don't have a problem with this. As we move farther, I think you will see the debate start a little bit more about folks making sure, hey, what about this group, or that group, or this area, or this technology sector, or this business sector, or whatever. Right now, it's broad and easy to support. And as we narrow in, and as the resources become more available, I think that's where these sort of principled positions will help keep us moving in a straight line. I will say that, having been on this council for a while, and I'm sure Councilmember Chenier would agree with me, when we do start with four principled points or five principled points, it does help us keep the conversation sort of between the navigational beacons as we move forward. And that's the way I see this, as a launch of that type of dialogue, and I'm comfortable with it. For the Women and Girls Advancement Committee, just so you know, I appreciate anybody and everybody, including all of these guys up here, who will help me keep those issues at the forefront all the time. I'm just one girl. There's not like a lot, you know. But I think I have good partners in that approach. I don't think that women will be left behind. We will make sure of that, right, ladies?
You have good partners.
So we do have good partners on that, and I just think we have to keep talking about it, keep saying things, keep noting the times where we think a group, any group, is missing from the discussion, whether that's nonprofits, or a particular sector, or a gender, or an ethnic group, or a neighborhood. We just need to keep talking about it, keep trying to reinsert everybody into that economic renaissance that we're trying to achieve in Sacramento.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I step in really quick?
I'm sorry. Yes, please. This is the workshop.
Great. So I just want to echo what you and Angelique had said. Was that part... So I looked at this, it's actually before even thinking of Measure U. It's really just the fact that you actually had something that was talking about an inclusive economy and being far-reaching and including in all the neighborhoods, all the different people, and the segments that are here. So when I look at this, I think it's important to have this moving forward, whether or not something happens, because you still needed some sort of groundwork that held people accountable. Because I think that when we're looking at everything, that's been the biggest issue with people, that they don't trust that there's no way to, you know, hold someone accountable, you know, whether or not something was accomplished, or whether it had the success that we thought it was going to have. And I think this is just, it's important just to have this, no matter what happens in, you know, six weeks from now, that this is like the starting point. So I just want to make sure that that was like put in there, because I think when you guys put this in, that, you know, we were committed to an inclusive economy, that that's what it meant, that, you know, we're starting for something. We're putting the principles together. We're putting these metrics together. And if we have this, you know, something that happens next six weeks, we're going to be better prepared for it. But regardless of that, you're preparing, you know, for the future of Sacramento anyway.
Very good. This is a beginning, but it's more than just, we're intending to try to find the middle ground between the beginning and a very prescriptive set of final evaluation metrics. We're trying to actually be specific enough to show the voters and to also show each other and the community that we are serious about measuring and evaluating ourselves in this way. Mr. Broom?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, and I think, you know, this will evolve, right? I mean, this is going to evolve. We're going to work with it. We're going to make it better. What I think is really good about this is the principles of it are correct. You know, that's what I like about it. You know, the peer review, the transparency, best practices, discipline, returns, inclusion, the right objectives. And one of the things I've learned from doing this 30 years in different communities, when you do something right, your community lets you do something again. And I think it's really important that, you know, we build on this, you know, that as we do this, you know, we're going to gain confidence from our community, and they'll trust us to do more. And part of this, too, with the shifting administration, is, you know, the next governor has to help communities with their economic development needs. I mean, right now, you know, we're whistling in the wind when we're trying to solve problems, because we don't have the state economic infrastructure that should be provided to this community to solve these problems. So I think as we do, I think the core principles are correct.
Did he sign your bill, by the way?
Big part, no, he vetoed it. That's what I was talking about.
He vetoed the bill? I don't know why.
I just reminded him. I was in a good mood, and he vetoed it, you know. And I learned never to say anything after a governor vetoes a bill, because then he'll veto every bill that's ever on his desk.
Except when he's a lame duck.
Yeah, he's gone in 60 days. Guess I'm talking to Gavin. But, you know, we need urban tools from the state. The state collects all the income from the economy. The split on the economy between the state and the city ain't fair. State gets it all, we get a little. So, you know, one of the things that I hope Measure U will do, too, with the best practice, is we'll be able to bring in Senator Pan and bring in, you know, Assemblyman Cooley and our policymakers and say, okay, you know, we've gone really far with our own sweat equity model, and, you know, we would like the state of California to bring back, you know, tax increment financing or other tools that can help us with affordable housing. Because some of these objectives that we have to achieve as a community just can't be achieved unless the state gets more engaged in helping communities be built. So I think with our framework, peer review, investment committee, national expertise, metrics, returns, accountability, those are the right frameworks. And then over time, we'll adjust the mechanics, because we'll learn how to do this better. And then when we do it right, we'll gain confidence. And as we get great outcomes, it'll allow us to be more empowered with the other cities and the other regions to call for the state of California to do more for our communities, and more for our neighbors, and more for our neighborhoods. And I think that's kind of part of the civic lesson that's going on around here. I think this has been a very good civic lesson. We've sort of smoked some people out that aren't that great at civics. And then, you know, we've demonstrated that some people are very serious about civics. And I think this is a really powerful process, and I hope that the council is really enthusiastic about it, because I see it... about it, because I see it as transformative and a real standard bearer.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Barry. Tracy, did you have something to add? Okay. Jay, Councilman Chenier, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. A few things, actually. So one is, I want to say thank you to our panelists, and Michael and his staff have done a great job, and the three brain trusts back there, Richard and Mike, and Doreen, and I'm not sure if we ever got Doreen's final report, so I don't know if we have that coming to us. Okay, that'd be great. But, you know, just a couple of comments. I mean, I heard a great quote last week, that change comes at the speed of trust, which I thought was really interesting. It's a great quote. And to me, a lot of this is about that. You know, I don't want to underestimate the challenge and the complexity of what we're undertaking here. This is not something that will happen overnight. This is not something that will happen in a month or two months. This is something that this council and hopefully subsequent councils will really have to buy into and say, this is a way we do business, and we are changing the way we do business by undertaking this initiative. I think both of the pieces, the Community Advisory Committee and this kind of work hand-in-hand, and hopefully grow to become an infrastructure that the city uses in how it makes its decisions, both with Measure U dollars, but also with all of our budget. And I know the metrics that we're talking about are for the full budget, not just new dollars that are coming in. So I just want to throw a little bit of caution out there, that this is going to require a lot of persistence, a lot of patience. It is, as Barry said, it's going to evolve. We're going to continue to look at it, and we'll have to figure out how the best way to do that is, and how to involve both the council and the community in continuing to look at, is this working for us or not? And how can we make it better, and what are the results? I think on the other side of the coin, the trust coin, it gives us an opportunity. And the opportunity is really to follow through on what we're talking about, and to work with the community through this Community Advisory Committee, through the folks who will be looking at projects for us and helping us out with the expertise that they have to build trust in the community that we're, it just isn't, you know, the eight members of the council plus the mayor who are making these decisions. But again, that we built an infrastructure that is engaged, that is participatory, that involves folks from our neighborhoods in how we make these decisions. So again, I'm excited about the prospects of this. Again, I want to thank everyone. It's been a long way to get here. This is a tremendous, and people need to understand how much work has gone into getting to where we are today. It's not a, hey, let's go do this, and we'll have a two-week process, and it's not something that we can just take from another city and do it. This has to be about Sacramento and how Sacramento works, and our own personality, and our own characteristics. So again, I'm excited to move forward with this. I think it's great. Mayor, thank you for bringing this. Appreciate it. And Howard, thank you to all your staff for being willing to undertake this, and we'll have to move forward on that. So that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think very important topic, you know, very timely. You know, my position on this issue, as well as some of the others that are coming, is that we've had places in the city that have had, you know, decades of urban decay and neglect, and, you know, what I'd like to see from the city is a sustained focus on turning around some of the underperforming parts of our city. And I think what we will see is that we have some of our biggest opportunities there. You know, if we can increase property values, we can decrease unemployment, continue even in this environment where we have, you know, almost historical lows in terms of unemployment, but you go into some of these neighborhoods, you still have an overabundance of young people, minorities, you know, people of color that are either unemployed or underemployed. In addition to that, I think our public education system is something that could pay tremendous dividends, and I know there's been some talk about that. But if you look at places where you have the highest property values, you know, throughout our state and just about any other place you go, it's typically where they have the best public schools, where people don't have to pay to send their kids to private school. And so those things add to the city's balance sheet in a lot of ways, reduce crime in other ways, but also in terms of revenue coming back to the city. And so I think some of this focus, in my mind, really, you know, it's not just about, you know, having metrics and talking about inclusion, but we have to not just be about pointing to things. We need to have a sustained focus, like a magnifying glass just lasering in on these types of communities to really bring about the changes we need. Otherwise, when things come up like increasing property taxes, or increasing public utility rates, or increasing, you know, our city utility rates, it becomes very hard for people in these underperforming communities to continually have to support places in the city with their tax dollars when they're not getting, you know, the benefits that justify their support. And so, you know, I'm hopeful that through this discussion, we will really get at a real way that will have a concentrated and a sustained focus at really, and not letting up until we actually get the improvement. And sometimes that means some of the other things we wanted to do, we won't be able to do, because we need to focus in these areas. And then once we get these areas turned around, then we can start moving. It's not a district thing, it's not a, you know, a city thing. It's really, I think, it's a human fallacy that these things are just going to correct themselves over time if we keep doing the same things we've been doing. And I think history proves that that's not the case, so that's it.
Let me just say, Councilman Warren, I think you make a really great point, and it allows me to maybe provide some clarity about this metrics issue, right? Because metrics are not an end in and of themselves. They're a means to an end. Metrics are intended as a transparency tool that requires us to look at ourselves, each other, and our constituents every month, every year, and ask ourselves in a very public way, are we in fact investing our public resources in a way that are improving the lives of people, especially in forgotten neighborhoods? That's the whole point. For without any form of metrics that are transparent, you just, it allows the governing body to spend the resources rather randomly, and to then, you know, hope that people feel that things are better, without actually having to prove that they are better. So I take your point very seriously. Thank you. Councilman Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to thank you for, and all your staff that have worked on this issue, and also our city staff, Michael, I think this has been great, to get to this point. I mean, last night, the mayor and I were at the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association talking about the future of our city. And one of the comments that was asked is, you know, you know, how will, Mr. Mayor, how will us regular folk not get forgotten? You know, how will we ensure that us in the neighborhoods are not going to fall behind maybe those who have stronger voices or more resources? And I think what, you know, what this does here today, in fact, I don't think, I have a lot of confidence in it, is that it brings that level of clear direction of how our city's going to respond, when, whatever case our city is, with Measure U, without Measure U, future resources, whatever it takes, of what are the priorities for us? And, you know, something that was brought up yesterday as well was ensuring that we focus on our homegrown talent, and one of the first criterias that come up in, for tonight's conversation, is, it actually says cultivating homegrown talent, like is the number one issue. And that, I think, is a clear direction. So the development of trust for residents and ensuring that this is for Sacramento and Sacramentoans, I think is a huge asset, and something to take away from this conversation. The second piece is connecting the dots. We have a lot of resources, we have a lot of tools in our toolkit here, but it seems like, you know, we've left a pipe wrench on one side, a screwdriver down behind the car seat, and we're looking for the next tool to get us resolved. This actually pulls them all together in that tool chest. One of the clear things that I like about this in looking at strategies, and particularly with the criteria that we'll talk about tonight, is linking industry and universities together. And for us as a city to drive that, and not be dependent on whether it's UC Davis who wants to drive Aggie Square, or Sac State that has this, some property on the Ravona area, Decredited Innovation area, it actually gives direction to the city to say, let's connect the dots on our skills and our assets, like universities and our college students, that, as you know, many of them, like yourself and Councilmember Ashby and alumnus of UC Davis, stay in the area. And, but some of them don't. In fact, I remember when I graduated from college at Sac State, most engineers got their diploma and then jumped on the ant track to the Bay Area. We need to keep that talent here, and I think that what this says is that it gives clear direction on finding measurable outcomes for things that are going to increase our economic mobility here, and reducing barriers to economic growth. Councilmember Warren brought this up, and I, it's an eight-point font, so I hope that maybe someone will identify it before tonight. But I do believe that some of our commercial corridors, you know, the small businesses in that area, in those areas, they have strong, more difficult challenges in figuring out how to advance and grow their businesses and be successful, and the city can play the role in helping reduce those barriers. And I think that's where the city's role is, is figuring out how do we reduce barriers to opportunity and growth. Finally, the last, I think, point on reduction of barriers, and, you know, I want to thank the Sacramento Women and Girls Advancement Coalition for coming here today. But it's the issue of workforce opportunities, and one clear thing is the issue of childcare. And this will, I'll take this as an opportunity for a shameless plug of we're holding in cooperation and at the direction and leadership of the Sacramento Women's and Girls Advancement Coalition, a hearing on the growth and the need for childcare and available childcare in Sacramento, because when families want to get back to work and provide a safe place for their kids, childcare becomes a barrier for opportunity. And so, again, this goes to a lot of credit for the city staff. I think it is a starting point, but it is a clear starting point to provide trust, to connect the dots about how do we control our own destiny, and finally, how do we reduce barriers so that Sacramentoans have the ability to control their own destiny and prosper in our own city? With that, Mr. Mayor, I look forward to the conversation later tonight.
Thank you very much. Councilman Geta, just a couple of observations here, and then maybe we'll close off and we'll reconvene this evening. I think, you know, I always look at the challenge and the opportunity here. And the challenge is what I might describe as the Golden One Center phenomena. I just made that term up. That was a signature achievement for the city, and many of you participated in it. And it represented hopes and aspirations, and obviously already had a huge impact on our downtown and our entire region. So I often get asked, right, what's next? And so we can point to a list of very tangible achievements, whether it's Centene coming to Sacramento and 5,000 new jobs, whether it's Electrify America and $44 million investment, whether it's all the tremendous work your members are doing in your neighborhoods, whether it's this prospect of Aggie Square and the Sac State work around innovation and tying them together, whether it's the art and culture boom in this city. But we haven't attained or achieved a Golden One Center since the Golden One Center. And so what is this work here? This is not a single shiny object, even a shiny impressive object. This is actually the hard work to lay a foundation, hopefully with significant resources accompanying that foundation, that will allow us to more regularly produce high-wage job opportunities and new industries and more housing on a regular basis, not as a climactic or single achievement that everybody says, wow, how did they do that? I mean, the thing about the Golden One Center that is interesting to me, when you really think about it, is that what was the reaction from people, which is, how did you pull that off? Like it was unexpected. And in some ways, of course, it was heroic, because the team was about to leave, and we all know the circumstances, but really kind of the Sacramento culture and mentality is, how did we, how were we able to do that? Like it's some surprise. What we're trying to do here is to never again be surprised by what we're capable of achieving, by putting together the right policy framework, the right commitment with, hopefully, real resources to be able to do that at various sizes and scales every year in this city. So maybe it's not as sexy as a single project, and I get that. But I think if we stick with this and we're serious about it, it will have an impact that is even greater than that great and signature achievement. And we're also looking for the next great project, by the way, in addition, where the two don't have to be mutually exclusive. But I think that's sort of what the challenge and the opportunity here is, no, we should never again be surprised by our success, ever. Should expect it. So we're trying to put together here. Okay. Now that Reverend Steinberg has finished his sermon, if there is nothing else to come before us at this workshop, let me thank the panelists, let me thank the staff, we'll reconvene at 5:00 o'clock, and we are going to get into deep detail here about the metrics and the commission, and point to next week's hearing on efficiency as well, all right? We will stand in recess. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.